Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education meeting at 8:30, it's nine o'clock this morning. We're going to go into public session now. We were in executive session a little earlier. So, first item on the agenda is petitions and hearings from citizens on the agenda item. Or any matter, because we're only going to have one public comment section today. So, the microphone is right here?
Good time.
Yes, oh, better? Okay, okay. I'm sure she can hear me. Okay, ma'am, we're not going to go through this again. Ma'am, you're out of order already, please, okay? Thank you.
Let's discuss time.
This is the Board of Ed meeting, and it's important that even deaf people get to hear you, so please use your microphones. And nobody can be out of order for trying to hear a meeting.
We will, thank you, thank you. Now, you just allotted your time for speaking.
Well, that's cool.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so Mr. Robertson has a comment about the time before the meeting.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. Because our board actually has to go to work, we are going to limit the meeting time to 10 o'clock. That means that the comments, it's now four minutes after nine, the comments prior to the board voting will be ended by 9:45. So, it gives us, you know, 40 minutes for public comments prior to the vote. We thank you for your cooperation and sorry for any inconvenience from a time standpoint, and thank you for your support.
Okay, once again, public comment, if you'd like to make a public comment on the agenda items or any items, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Good morning, Robyn Isurles, 22 Yale Terrace. Didn't realize we would be commenting before the vote, so this is presuming you vote in the way that I would like you to vote. Could we just imagine for a moment if you would have listened to the many, many, many voices who were sharing their opposition to the superintendent leading up to your decision to renew his contract last spring? First, I would like to request that the Board of Ed, once they terminate the contract with Superintendent Rutsky, consider an in-house search for the superintendent rather than spending any more money on this debacle. I would also ask that you create a fair and clear set of guidelines, communicated well as to how a committee inclusive of all district stakeholders will be formed to be part of the search process. Secondly, among the many charges against Superintendent Rutsky was his hiring of administrative staff who he had working relationships with him at his prior place's employment. In the spirit of rebuilding trust in our community, I ask for your commitment to review all of the administrators hired during Rutsky's tenure to ensure that they are performing up to the standards we expect in our district. Finally, I ask that you consider searching for a new law firm prior to the search of a superintendent. This community needs to put the events of the past several years behind us, and we all deserve a fresh start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Hi, Cindy Matute Brown, 24 Coral Circle. I am surprised that we're here today. I was very disappointed the night that you all voted last spring to renew the superintendent's contract. We often say we don't have enough money in our budget, in our school budget, to service our children, all of our children, yet we renewed the superintendent, having had the information beforehand. Our community is now further torn apart because you sat with the information that polite parents and community members brought to your attention. If it were not for the efforts of some brave souls to Oprah and exercise their rights and their resources to bring this matter to the public attention, it would cause greater harm. I'm looking forward to understanding what your process is in selecting, if that's in-house, how you're going to form that committee, and to make sure that it is inclusive of everyone. I'm very saddened to know that moving forward, if the agreement, the separation agreement, not if, it's going to cost us more money, our children are the ones who are going to suffer, because there's going to be less money for the programs that they need. There's going to be less money for our teachers and services, and that's just some, it's one of the biggest failures of your leadership. And I'm so sorry that we're here today, but I'm happy that we're here today. There's two things that I want to make sure that people in our community understand, is that there's power in the people, and sometimes being polite doesn't get us to where we need to be, so we need to speak out loud. Looking forward to a better tomorrow with the leadership. And just a reminder to our community that remember who you vote for in your next Board of Elections, because that's who's going to choose your superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Barry Geltzner, 118 Old Indian Road. Just want to thank you for your brave and courageous decision here today, assuming that you do vote on it. Also, I want you to take in consideration, we have an unbelievable valuable source of information when it comes to superintendent in Jerry Tarnoff, and I really, really encourage you guys to tap into that wealth of knowledge. I mean, not to be a wise guy, but he's forgotten more about education being a superintendent than all of us know in this room. So, I think it's very, very important that we use him, right, to help us transition and get away from this and grow and be the great school that we know he can be.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Michaela Bennett, 35 Old Indian Road. There are no winners, and today is not a day to rejoice, or maybe the teachers are winners, that's what I keep getting in my inbox, but I don't think any of us are winners. I think that we all lost something in this process. One of the things that I just want to say is you're on warning that we take notice. West Orange is watching what you do. I will never again trust and believe that the people that I elect in our town will do the right thing. I won't. I've told you this more than once, that I voted for many of you, most of you, all but one of you. And it's deeply disturbing to me that you did not earn the trust of that vote. You did not, Sandra, when we talked privately, and you acted in messages with each other like you don't know me and you didn't know who I was. You certainly do. When I said you were complicit after you all decided, except for Irv, to renew a contract, I'm sorry, Ron, you as well, you were conflicted, I told you all you were complicit. You're complicit in why it took this long. So, any of the unintended consequences that we will now learn after this meeting are yours to bear as well. He'll be long gone. He doesn't care. He never did. I know you all believe he did, but he doesn't. This was a job to him and a job that he really didn't care about doing well. He didn't care about the kids, he cared about himself. Whatever guided you to keep this man, whether it was your legal counsel, whether it was your laziness, whatever guided you all to keep this man, you put us in the position that we're in. And I'm just letting you know, you're on notice, you're duly warned. I will never stop watching what you do and how you do it and why you do it, because you didn't earn that trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Gina Velasquez, 22 Coral Circle. I just want to speak on the fact that the damage that was done in the Special Education Department, I just want to make sure that you guys take in consideration when hiring the next superintendent, that you, that you seek people that are, that will do well for our Special Education Department and that have their best interest, because a lot of damage was done, and we need a lot of work to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Tom Volsho, 40 Overlook Avenue. The first thing, I was going to email you last night, the first thing I noticed, the Legionella test results for Gregory School don't match the rooms that were tested in the first phase of testing, so I just want to, because it's almost like, here's the results after the chlorination process, but like, for instance, the nurses sink, tested very high for Legionella in the first round of testing, in the second round of testing, it's almost a completely different set of rooms, maybe there's one overlap, because it was like the children's restrooms that were testing high in the first round of testing, so like the two results, it's almost like, it's almost like they tested different rooms than they did the first time, which you can't tell if the chlorination worked. So, yeah, I was a little surprised at the hostility when Nancy discussed speaking into the microphone, because I think we're at the point where you're going to rebuild the community now after this destructive path of fraud has left its, all these victims in its wake. So, I think like, you know, you want to really be positive and try to be professional, not, you know, not to embarrass you, I want to watch you rebuild, but this disturbing individual that you brought into our school system with his own, he's left a path of destruction, it seems like wherever he's been, but a lot of, there's confidentiality agreements so people can move on, but there is a term Adam Clark of the Star Ledger wrote called passing the trash, where you have a bad teacher or administrator, there's a hush agreement and then they can go and work somewhere else, which is potentially detrimental. So, we have the Legionella, the board statement on May 25th that you guys wrote, which was, didn't name us, but we know it was about myself, Barry and Michaela, gave carte blanche reason for certain people in the community to go after us and do weird things to us. So, you sort of signed our bullying warrant towards parents in the community, just to let you know the implications here. So, I hope we can rebuild, there's a lot of damage and destruction. A bully has just been removed from our school district, and the bully sat at the top of the school district and introduced a culture of bullying among administrators, principals, and teachers pitting them against each other, and parents. And I'm one of the parents that wound up in the wake of this, so I think we really have to be professional, rebuild, don't get defensive. Cynthia, as the PR contractor, when people ask questions, I have friends that work in PR in corporations, and when somebody, somebody could practically spit in their face, and they'll be like, you know, we take your concerns very seriously. I know it's boilerplate, but it comes off as very professional. So, thank you for your time, and I'm, one second, there we go. Have a nice day.
Thank you. In the, in the spirit of rebuilding, please come up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Charles, for giving the spirit of rebuilding. I do have to say that I do take umbrage on behalf of a person with a 45% hearing loss and on behalf of all others in our community with various kinds of disabilities. You are being recorded for Public Access Channel 36 on Comcast, 45 or 43 it is on FiOS. There he is. Michaela is recording for those who need live streaming. Seventy-seven people. I urge all of you, if you're on the board or not on the board or in your future endeavors, to consider why you have a microphone in front of you. It's not there for decoration. I do appreciate you giving me the microphone. I realize, you know, everybody's hair is up this morning, it's a difficult topic. I hope that you rebuild. I hope that in future, when you're looking for a new superintendent, that you, whoever's on the board, new or old, vet very carefully each and every item on that person's application and resume. Don't take anything for granted, look it up. Did they actually work where they said they would work? Did they work? Did they actually do what they said they were going to do? Don't depend it on somebody else to do the work for you. You know what they say, when you, when you assume you make an A-S-S out of you and me, that's how you spell the word assume, I know you all know that, it's not a joke. My son reiterated to me for good reason. I don't mean to be snarky here, but it's accurate. Also, who is our current acting superintendent? We all have a right to know that. You also have a right to know, no violations of privacy, but you know, you did spend a lot of money to renew the superintendent's contract. Did you have to buy him out to get him out of the contract? And how does, where does that leave the taxpayers? It's a sad day for all of us. I do hope we can rebuild. I hope that you all will take the leadership in saying that people are not spreading rumors and, you know, nobody here is saying things that are negative without evidence going forward, okay? People are not just randomly spreading rumors here. There were actual facts presented, they were carefully checked, they were Oprah'd, there was no nonsense going on here, and there was a lot of back and forth, that some crazy ladies are saying this and some people are saying that, and people are not being civil. Well, you know what, you know, where's, where's Mr. Rutsky even today? He's, according to your agenda, he's, he's still superintendent until tonight. Where is he now? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Just for the record, for, in the continuing spirit and rebuild, I want to wish you a happy birthday on my half-day, okay? Next, please.
Good morning, everyone. I do want to say thank you for hosting this meeting. However, I did want to make a comment that why are we here at 8:30 in the morning, and where it wasn't at a time that more parents could be here. It could have been in the evening meeting, which would have been much more convenient for the population of West Orange and the teachers as well, because they do have an vested interest in this decision. However, I am thankful that we are having a meeting. Secondly, I just wanted to iterate what Gina Velasquez was saying about how Mr. Rutsky did cause a lot of damage for the special needs community, and again, when we go through the next process of selecting someone, please let them have some sort of vested interest in how to rebuild our special services department, because we are in shambles. And then, thirdly, again, I just wanted to thank Michaela and her husband and everyone else involved who spoke up and who were bullied, and we just thank you for your bravery and your courage. And I think just lastly, just going forward, I would just love more transparency coming from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone further? See, and I'm going to close that section of the agenda. We're going to take, I guess, comments from the board on any of the questions or the discussions from the public now. Mr. Alpert?
I'll have more later, but just to respond to Mrs. Rochausky, right? Laura, who runs, Lauren, I'm so sorry, who runs the microphones for us, is usually really good about watching the levels, and usually she's got headphones on in the regular meetings, and if she can't hear any of us, is usually really good about reminding us. I know you personally have the issue, and we have to be more cognizant of that in general, but just in terms of you wanting to make sure people who are watching on TV can hear it, she's always been really excellent at making sure that they can. You're up.
Ms. Mordecai? Ms. Mordecai?
Sure, just one comment in response to Mrs. Bennett. Actually, I've only met you once, and that was early this year when I won the Super Bowl pool. Prior to that, I did not know you. My comment was correct. I did not know you before the summer, when I picked up my Super Bowl winnings.
That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Schwartzbaum? Mr. Schwartzbaum?
My only comment really relates to some of the comments regarding our special ed department. I will take exception to many of the statements. Our special ed education department is one of the premier special ed programs in the state. I know of more than 40 people have moved to West Orange because of our outstanding special ed program. Every, every program needs to be improved. None of, if any of us think that we are 100% and have no improvement, then we're all, you know, you need to pick up a merit. So, while all programs need to be improved, without a doubt, casting aspersions against our own program, I think really hurts our town, and we have a great program, and I, and I think we, while there were many individuals, there are people who have different opinions about issues. I don't think we need to pick on one of our best programs in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Mr. Robertson?
First, I have a question for attorney. I'm sorry. Mr. Jacoby, there are a couple of questions that were asked that I don't feel should be answered until after the board has voted on the resolution.
I think that that would be more appropriate, and I can explain the legal procedure after you guys vote.
Okay.
On how this.
Because I can answer them, but I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, and everything that you're voting upon is done in conformance with law, there's very strict laws, and I can go over that with you.
Absolutely. For the, in terms of comments and things that aren't related to the legal requirements of, what I can comment on after the resolution is voted on, let me go to, actually, money, can't do that yet.
Mr. Robertson, you're only free to comment. You're free to comment afterwards, the board still has.
Let me just do it afterwards, because I, just too many of them are borderline, I don't want to.
Right. The only comment I have for Mr. Calavano is, Mr. Volsho spoke about the, the testing for Legionella, the rooms, can we?
I'll look into that today.
The next part of the agenda, I'm going to turn over to Vice President Mark Robertson to handle that section of the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Charles. I'm just going to read the resolution before us, that, upon which we'll vote. Personnel, A, number one, recommend approve the following resolution, whereas the West Orange Board of Education, board currently employs Jeffrey Rutsky, Rutsky is superintendent, whereas the board and Rutsky agree that it is in the party's best interest to terminate their employment relationship effective midnight, October 19th, 2018, whereas the board and Rutsky have agreed to enter into the separation agreement dated October 19th, 2018, and whereas the New Jersey Commissioner of Education has reviewed and approved the separation agreement pursuant to NJSA 18A, colon, 17 dash 20, dot A, in a letter dated October 17th, 2018. Now, therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. The board hereby accepts and agrees to execute the terms and conditions contained in the separation agreement dated October 19th, 2018. The board further authorizes the board vice president to execute the separation agreement dated October 19th, 2018, and that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Do I have a motion to move this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, please take the roll call.
Mr. Alpert?
Hold on. I apologize.
I'm sorry. Further discussion? I apologize. Is there any discussion by the board?
No.
Seeing as there's no discussion, I apologize. Ms. Mordecai?
Yes. I'd just like to mention that I really appreciate Mr. Rutsky's service here for the last four years. He's implemented many programs, despite what a lot of people have said, there are many, many good programs that were implemented over his term, and I'd like to thank him for his service, and I'm sorry to see him go.
Mr. Robertson, I was going to comment after we voted, but if you prefer to do all the comments now, that's fine, I can, it's up to you.
Just comments, any comments related to discussion of the resolution?
No, I can, I can.
Comments in response to the public, you can still do after the resolution.
I can do after, that's fine.
Okay. Any other comments or any other discussion from the board? Seeing as there is none, Mr. Calavano, please take the roll call, but.
Mr. Alpert? Yes. Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
As required by ethics law, I must abstain.
401.
We will now continue board comments in regard to the resolution, and I guess, was, Mr. Alpert, would you like to go first?
Sure. I just would like to point out that, you know, all along, we've been doing our jobs in accordance with the Code of Ethics and the other legal guidelines that board members have to abide by. I know that the pace of everything and the legal restrictions on what we could say caused a lot of frustration and have led some to say that we haven't been doing our jobs, but that's just not true. I apologize for our inability to be more open about things, but those are the requirements of the job, and it's frustrating to us as well, because often, and not speaking specifically about today's topic, but really just in general, often if we were able to legally share more things, the public would have a lot more appreciation for why we make some of the decisions we do. It's important to understand that if a board does something in the wrong way, it risks having its actions reversed and exposing the taxpayers to legal, to unnecessary legal action. I know some of you feel ignored, you have not been ignored. We've been following the procedures we are mandated to follow and keeping our mouths shut about it, because that's what we're sworn to do. And I want to thank Mr. Rutsky for his service. I greatly appreciate the many positive impacts he's had on our district, and I wish him all the best.
Please, order no comments from the audience, from the public. Next, Ms. Mordecai?
I made my comments. I appreciate Mr. Rutsky's service. I appreciate Mr. Rutsky's service, as Mr. Alpert said, and as I said earlier, he made many, many positive impacts on this district, from expanding the Air Force Junior RTC program to bringing in the Orton-Gillingham program, increasing professional development at every level, getting Edison Central Six out of focus status, there's a laundry list, and holding staff accountable, and we also successfully negotiated our four contracts. I know the public was very upset, that took two years, but there are many districts out there that it took five years. So, there are many positive things that he's done, and I am sorry to see him go, and I wish him well in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
No comments.
Okay. Okay. First, to answer one general question that was referred to directly or indirectly, as confirmed by the Executive County Superintendent and in accordance with our policy, effective immediately Assistant Superintendent in charge of curriculum, Ms. Evony Domenades, will be assuming the duties of the superintendent. The board is still discussing what our next steps will be, whether to search for an interim or search, begin the search for a superintendent, a permanent superintendent, and we will bring you up to speed by the November 5th board meeting. Ms. Isurles, the request to consider, please, please keep order, the request to consider in-house rather than spend more money. We will certainly consider any in-house candidates at the point where we begin a search and determine our course of action. We will certainly consider in-house candidates. We hear you loud and.
In-house search.
I'm sorry, in-house search. Right, okay, I apologize. In reference to an in-house search, we haven't determined what our course of action will be yet, but we hear you loud and clear in terms of the spending of money, and that's a concern that's held by a number of folks who have spoken today in terms of making sure the money's going into the classrooms, money's going to the kids, money's going to the teachers, and not being spent administratively. I would comment on that, though, that the, when searching for a, the CSA or superintendent, the school business administrator essentially, that's effectively searching for a CEO for what is a multi, hundreds of millions of dollars in a company, because when you consider the 13 facilities, the number of programs involved, in addition to the budget we approved, you consider the value of facilities, value of equipment, and the budget, it's, it's a very big job. And so, to that effect, we will explore whether to do only in-house search versus external search. The board has not made any decision upon that, but we hear you. In terms of a committee inclusive of staff and, and parents and administrators, when we conducted, excuse me, the last two searches, one of which began before I was on the board, there was a public forum held, there was a committee, and there was also a survey that was very revealing, in-depth survey with a lot of narrative responses by the teachers. We will, having heard the public. We will, having heard the public, excuse me, having heard the public, the public's cry for greater involvement in the decision-making and the input by our teachers who are on the front lines, greater involvement by the parents who are, along with us, the stewards of their child's education. We hear you loud and clear. We're going to look for every alternative, every option for parents and teachers to be more integrally involved in the process. We don't know what that's going to be yet. We still have to have that discussion as a board, and I will not, I cannot answer beyond that. That would be speculation. In terms of a new law firm, you know, the board will discuss all options that you put before us. Ms. Matute Brown, you know, we hear your concerns and your anger and your frustration, and understand that that's mirrored by others, by many others. And, you know, we will, once again, in our process, look at both the financial implications. I apologize. I wasn't speaking closely enough. It's kind of hard to, it's almost like kissing the mic. But we will look at the financial implications, and we will look at, we're cognizant of the fact that money, we want most of the money to be going to teachers to teach the students. We want money going into the classroom. And you're an educator as well as have been a parent in the district. We hear you. And once again, as I said earlier, when we search for someone to lead the district, technically, we're searching for a CEO of a company that's worth hundreds of millions of dollars. It's analogous to that, but even greater than that, this is an entity that is helping to shape the lives of our children. So, you know, we will look at what the best method is to find, to secure the best leadership, have the best transition possible, and we will listen to you, the public, parents, teachers, and administrators in that process. Barry, thank you for the gracious tone of how you came to the mic today, and thank you for encouragement, and certainly, you know, Mr. Tarnoff, all of us know him and respect him, and thank you for that suggestion. Ms. Bennett, we hear you as well, loud and clear, and we're going to review. I'm not going to reiterate the things I said earlier, but we're taking all these feelings and these thoughts into consideration, and we appreciate your comments and your passion. Ms. Velazquez, you know, we have, beginning with the special education audit, we're, you know, addressing the issues in the special education department to the best of our ability. Mr. Charles has already spoken in regard to Mr. Volso on Legionella. I want to reiterate, okay, we already answered who's the current acting, the cost of the buyout. To that, I will defer, in terms of the structure of the buyout, I will defer to Mr. Jacoby. In terms of the cost of the buyout, I'll refer to the details to Mr. Calavano.
Under New Jersey law, I'm sorry, under New Jersey law, any type of separation agreement has to be voluntarily agreed to by both parties, the echoing superintendent and the board. It's mandated that the payout cannot exceed three months for each year remaining on the contract. Here, we had a three-year contract, a little less than three years remaining. It can't exceed that amount, and the, ultimately, whatever is decided upon between the board and the superintendent, it has to be reviewed and approved by the New Jersey Commissioner of Education and legal counsel assigned to the Commissioner of Education, which is through the Attorney General's office. So the board, the action they took today, there was a letter that was received. There's been questions about the process. It takes time for the commissioner to review and approve, along with his or her legal counsel, in this case, his legal counsel. The commissioner's letter was received on October the 17th, and so the board, in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, there were questions about why is the meeting this morning? The board noticed the meeting Monday evening to be prepared, because they thought the letter was coming. The letter came October 17th, and this was the soonest that they could have a meeting, along with everyone's schedules. And as the board noted, next week is the New Jersey School Board Conference, so many people will be gone. And so the board wanted to take action on this matter as quickly as possible, and this morning was the earliest they could take that action. But they could not take any action until they got the commissioner's letter, and that was received on October 7th, Wednesday, October 17th.
Mr. Calavano?
So I don't really have anything else to add. Mr. Jacoby basically described the agreement.
Can Mr. Calavano go on to?
Mr. Calavano, Mr. Calavano can say the amount that's being paid out. That's absolutely fine.
Thank you.
Again, all the payouts are in conformance with the law.
After we finished this?
Yeah. All the payouts are in conformance of the law and were reviewed and approved by the New Jersey Commissioner of Education.
All right. Ms. Calavano?
The three months pay for every year left on a contract comes to about $130,079.39.
Okay. Next question, and after I finish responding to the earlier questions, we'll still have a little bit of time left, about five or 10 minutes, and we can open up. The other thing, also in regard to the, also, and I'm just going to finish up, also in regard to the timing, and I apologize, I was actually traveling. We tried to have the meeting either on a Wednesday or Thursday, got the letter on the 17th. Please, order. Thank you. That is the. Hit it. Okay. Is that, that's the entire agreement that?
Well, we're not going to read the entire agreement, but I can summarize the agreement. The financials are, I apologize, man. I'm trying to read, and it's hard for me to. The agreement has the financial component. There's the payment of his miracles for last year. He's entitled to get paid out for his unused vacation. These are, he had a contract that expired last year, so there's miracles. Again, all of these things have been approved by the executive county superintendent and the New Jersey Commissioner of Education. The total payment, as Mr. Calavano said, for the, for the contract was the 130, plus he gets, he has six unused vacation days that he gets paid, which is $4,536. His health insurance ends as of October 31st, and the other thing that's part of this agreement is there's a complete release. So, you know, the board, always, the board, people talk about it, but what this does, it's a complete release. There could be no litigation. There can't be any lawsuits. It gives finality and closure, and that's why the board, with the approval of the New Jersey Commissioner of Education, decided to enter into this agreement, so that there's closure and the community can move forward.
The board accepted Mr. Rutzke's resignation. Also, in regard to, let me go back to Ms. Newsom's question on timing. Just to be clear, we weren't allowed to act on anything until we got the letter back from the commissioner's office on the 17th. According to the law, we have to have 48 hours, provide 48 hours, please. We have to provide 48 hours' notice in the pre-approved printed newspaper. We can't just do it in social media. So that required that we be able to post it and then get it to the newspaper and have it posted 48 hours before. Additionally, we do have schedules next week where we'll be traveling or have other work related, so this was the earliest we could possibly attend to this critical issue. Last thing, that was a. Okay. Okay. Now, we have exactly five more minutes during which we can take additional questions. The board actually has to go to work. Ironic, isn't it? So do you. I know. Please, please come to the microphone for any comments. Please, please, please.
Okay, Rob and I Surles.
Order, order.
22 Yale Terrace. Thank you very much. Two quick things, so I hear $130,000 and change, $4,536. I didn't hear what the financial was, was for the miracle, if you could include that. Secondly, just to clarify, Mr. Robertson, I ask for an in-house search committee. There are other districts local that are as big as ours that are doing the same. I ask that you research that. I will help in any way. But this really should, we should move forward, keeping the cost close to nothing. Thank you.
I sent you guys an email, Barry Geltz, 118 Old Indian, I sent you guys an email this week with a question. It was not addressed. We are paying for a criminal attorney and a civil attorney for Mr. Rutzke. Do we continue to pay for that, or is that over, since the S County Prosecutor Office has confirmed that his investigation is still open and not concluded? Are we still on the hook, or is he on the hook?
I just want to mention why I mentioned the destruction that Rutzke had for the special education, Irv. I personally have a son in special education, 16 years old. Rutzke, he implemented a policy district-wide for me not to go into my son's classroom. I had to get a lawyer. Besides that, he wasted three years of middle school. My son is now in high school. But aside from all that, I was referring to the special audit. I mean, it's clear that we have things going on that are not up to par. And yes, the special education is wonderful and fantastic in West Orange. I would not be here if not. I mean, we do what we can, we do all we can for our special needs kids and our general kids, typical kids. So that's besides the point. I'm talking about the special needs audit, which is open and public to everyone, okay? So that's what I was referring to, not even my personal issues.
I didn't tell you this earlier, Nancy Warschowsky, W-A-R-S-H-O-W-S-K-Y, is in yellow at 45 Dogwood Road. You're giving us exceedingly little time. Will you allow, at the next Board of Education meeting, extra time for public comments, because many people can't be here, and you're not allowing us enough time to fully explore this matter? And I want to thank you for your time on the board, for the good things that you've done, for Mr. Rutzke, for the positive things that he's done. I'm not thanking you for the negative things that you've done, but I'll leave it at the positives, and thank you very much for your time.
Tom Volso, 40, Overlook Avenue. You've just sent a message to anybody out there who wants to commit fraud. Come to West Orange. Lie on your resume, falsify documents, and guess what? When you go home, they'll give you, they might give you a few hundred thousand dollars, depending on how early in your contract you do it. So you should really think about what you do. Sandra and Ken, I'm ashamed of you. You just thanked a fraud. You are defrauded. You know, if you want, Ken, you want me to go to, do you want me to get Richard Cody involved in this? Richard Cody, do you want him to start getting in, do you want me to get involved with somebody I know, a state senator that I know? She will hit the roof about this. Yeah, Loretta Weinberg. One of my colleagues was childhood friends with her. I told her all about Rutzke. She couldn't believe it. She's like, if Loretta hears this, she'll hit the roof. You want me to go there?
Do what you choose. You're a private individual.
Good. You just, you know, you just permitted fraud. I'm ashamed, like, didn't you learn? Haven't you learned that a man just triggered a terminate, it's a rule. You talk about, what about the rules your kids want to follow? Is this how you want your children to behave? I don't want my children to grow up and think that, oh, you can just violate contracts. You can sign agreements and then violate them and get money for it. Is that the message that you want to send? You just permitted fraud. You came in, your law firm, you worked with Rutzke for three years and nine months as board attorney in Roseland. He comes in, he subverts all the checks and balances with the board attorney, and then slowly edges your law firm in. Your law firm pushes everybody to litigation in cooperation with Rutzke, special ed parents, who are draining their retirement accounts to pad your law firm's pockets. And it's going to be, and this is public record, so other districts are going to see you, Mr. Jacoby, and they're going to think twice about having your firm in their district. That's one of the consequences you've just engaged in here, and do not, for a minute, use the NJSBA ever again to do a search. They were defrauded twice, and they act like, oh, the district is the property of the district. All the resumes went to the district. He submitted a different employment history for Roseland than he did for here, and you think it's okay? This man can be in three places at one time, according to all his employment records. How is that possible? He can exist in two different time zones. It's amazing, like what you've just done here. I mean, it's absolutely amazing. You know, at some level, maybe we are in some way, well, you are, you know, you're letting a person, you know, out of their employment, that's going to follow him. I mean, I'm sure he has a pension, you know, we partially have to pay for that. But this is, you know, you have to, you know, consider the consequences of your action. I'm so disappointed in you.
Ten seconds, sir.
Oh, yeah, you had to interrupt me. I'm very disappointed in you, Ken and Sandra. I thought you learned your lesson, and I can see very clearly that you have not learned a goddamn thing.
Thank you, Mr. Volso. Okay, folks, I just wanted, we have exactly two minutes, two minutes for one more comment. This is going, we need, I had mentioned earlier that, actually, I've gone five minutes over what the original is going to be. Excuse me, excuse me. Folks, earlier, I had said that we were actually supposed to stop comments at quarter of. We've already extended several minutes over.
Michaela Bennett, 35, Old Indian Road.
Thank you.
Why did you write a contract? That's my question. Why would you write a contract if you're not going to hold a man to it? The man violated a contract multiple times. He's a liar. He's a fraud, and now he's a thief. And you handed it all to him. When I told you, when you renewed his contract, that you were complicit, it was because you do not have the courage or spine to be able to hold someone to a contract. So you can look at me with disgust. You can look at me with disdain, but I'm standing in front of you saying that you have wasted the taxpayers' dollars. You are going to pay CSG, a law firm, upwards of $80,000. You continuously write checks to Mr. Jacoby's law firm. Mr. Jacoby's law firm, who went from Roseland to West Orange, interestingly enough, he cost, Mr. Rutzke, cost Roseland an awful lot of money, and what did they do? They passed the trash, and you, accepting a resignation from a superintendent who fraudulently violated the contract that you wrote for his employment, you are passing the trash. And I'm telling you right now, not on my watch, 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 and my dear friend, not on my watch. Our children deserve better than what you just pulled. It's a stunt. Don't think for a second that we don't see it. I am going to get the investigation report. I look forward to that moment. I look forward to it. And I'm telling you, you will all be exposed. So I hope that the public is listening and that the public votes in accord. If you want more of the same, you're going to get that if you vote for certain candidates. And if you want to see independence and education take priority, a superintendent is not a CEO. CEOs of companies make money. Our children deserve to be scholars and successful in a global economy by getting a solid education, because they were stewarded there, and they were stewarded there by someone noble, someone with integrity, and someone who's worthy of them. Shame on all of you.
Okay. The question on the payment for the attorneys, Mr. Calavano, could you clarify that?
We are not paying for Mr. Rutzke's attorney when we went through the separation agreement. We did pay for his attorney when he had to, when he was involved with the prosecutor with the other issue.
All right. Sure, Ken. Thank you all for your comments. Certainly, we'll continue this on November 5th, and we appreciate. Certainly, we'll continue this on November 5th, and we appreciate, we appreciate your attendance this morning. May I have a motion?
A motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.